Welcome back everyone to the eight one seven podcast. Happy Mother's Day. That's when we are recording this. So for any of you moms listening, happy Mother's Day and we hope that this has been a good day celebrating and hopefully resting.
Mothers are, you know, mothers are, you know, I wrote a nice little post on Facebook, which I posted on Facebook because I know that's where she would see it. If I posted it anywhere else, she wouldn't see it. So I posted a little thing on Facebook and it made me think like mothers is like the least, like it's the most powerful thing in the world. Like your amazing mom and I odds are the sons and the daughters and the kids never live up to the giving that you have given. And I think about how great my mom was, I will, I am not even close as great as a son as my mom was as a mom. And, uh, and so mothers are just like the epitome of like the power of selflessness. And like when we're selfless, how much good happens in the world? And some thanks for my mom for that.
Yeah, I think that's a good word.
Trying to mix it up here. I feel like we go straight into the news and we don't get to, you know, have a little hangout time on our, on our sessions, you know?
Hangout over. But today we, we've got a, a great interview with Fernando Peralta, who is one of the runoff candidates for District Nine City Council. And we'll do a little intro for him in a little bit, but first we, we want to get into a couple smaller stories. The first of which is some of the, the losing candidates have gone out of their way to endorse other candidates this week. Namely, Dr. Brian Bird endorsed Matty Parker. And, uh, one that I thought was a little bit random was District Two City Councilor Carlos Flores.
Supported Alan Gray.
Yeah. Supported Kelly Allen Gray, uh, who is the incumbent in a runoff for District Eight. I don't know. It just seemed like a, what's the purpose? Like anybody who follows Peralta like isn't.
You mean Flores?
Yes, sorry. Flores isn't voting in a District Eight runoff. It was just, I was kind of like, I don't know. What's the purpose of this? Like it's an incumbent endorsing an incumbent, uh, which could maybe go either way for, depending on how you feel the state of District Eight is.
Yep, yep, yep. And, and you also, you last week talked about Beto and the idea of these like national, I mean, these state, people starting to come in to help out. And like literally that same day, our pod was posted, Beto endorsed a Deborah.
Yeah, I thought that was big. I would love to see, um, I mean, he hosts.
Beto's the most love is like the greatest, the most loved loser on the planet though, I feel like.
Yeah, for sure.
We love him to death and I don't think anything he champions has actually gotten approved. But I do love him to death. Like it's not that I don't.
Well, and he heads a ton of resources, like he has a ton of people phone banking all the time.
Yeah.
And so that's what I want to see come behind endorsement like that is, yeah, young people love him. Let's like sick your phone bank people on Fort Worth for the next couple of weeks and like, just have them go at it. Like the number, the, the volume of calls that they make that he posts on Twitter, anytime they do these phone banking sessions are just massive. It's like, that's what somebody, that's what someone like Deborah needs right now is for that resource to come in and say, we're calling Fort Worth this week, or we're calling Fort Worth these next two weeks, and we're saying vote for Deborah Peoples.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I don't know how far like his endorsement goes just in terms of, is anybody that leans far enough to listen to Beto going to vote for Matty Parker? Like that's a real, that's a small group of people, if anyone.
Yeah. So the only thing that it could be is like, if you're a young person who didn't vote.
Yeah.
And now, and now Beto told you, you know, the vote, like, oh, but like still, like, I don't know how many people that is.
Or if you're someone state or nationally that, uh, got on the, the Beto train, maybe like this is a place to donate.
Yeah.
So I don't know. That's what I would love to see him follow up with the resources for her to, to really help.
I need him, I need, I need him to run for like governor. I need him to do something. We need him to win something though. I need it. He's such a good guy.
He is. Um, I was kind of surprised, like Kay Granger already sort of threw her hat in the ring for Brian Bird. I don't know it, what like the, uh, politics are around like now you, and do you endorse another person now? But I was kind of surprised that she has not thrown her hat in the ring yet. But I don't know, maybe that's like not a, a cool thing to do if you already endorsed somebody, even though they lost to go endorse someone else.
I just like, you know, you're, you're, you, you, you talk about how much your, your, your frustrations of Betsy Price is, is, is growing. But like, I, I, I mean, I just feel like she's just like, she's mafia out there and like, you know, newspaper said at the Lola's event, she was like, you know, I'm just disappointed in Brian. Like I, you know, the way, that's just not how we do it in Fort Worth.
Yeah.
And then like three days later, he's like, I endorse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just like, yo, they, the, the, like, they got the muscle on, on like,
Yeah.
how this goes down when it comes to sociology and like societal expectations. Cause I don't, cause I don't think, I don't think Ann endorses Deborah because of she's positioned as like this, like independent person.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know. It'll be interesting to see if anybody does come out and endorse anyone else. Uh, if I hear somebody say, that's not how we do it in Fort Worth. Again, I like, I might just, my head might explode. Like,
They're pushing that hard though.
That's not how we do it in Fort Worth is the language of an oppressor.
Yeah, exactly.
That is, we can't let things change because we have created power structure and power dynamics here. And like, it's just, oh, every time I hear it and see it, it's like, you know what? Like, oh, I'm happy to be the person that is marked as too political. Or like, doesn't fit into, to Fort Worth local politics because I speak out against that. And like, I hope that if you're listening, like you, uh, see through that as well. In that it's exactly what both sides are, are doing, you know, both are operating. Both are pitching their vision for how they can help all of Fort Worth through the lens of their political spectrum and political party. And we already know the Texas GOP has said that they're going to throw all their resources behind Matty Parker. So how, how is she not too political, but Deborah is too political? It's, it's the smoke, the smoke and mirrors of it that just, uh, really gets me riled up.
Yeah, yeah. Oh no, you're, and that's, and that's why we're a horrible voting state and a voting, uh, city because that's how people think. Oh, this is, you know, we, we're Republicans in Fort Worth. That's what we do. I don't need to go vote. Like I don't need to go vote because it doesn't matter. Yeah, it's, it's, um, yeah. And I'm interested. That's why I think like, hopefully like the debates, May 12th.
Yep.
And then May 18th.
Let's throw down.
I, I, I need Deborah to call it out. You know, I need Deborah to call it out and I need you to start, I need you to start hitting them, right? I need you to start saying the problems, you know? Who, who voted for Trump? Who endorsed this? You know, what does this person's parents' family does? What, you know? Start eating them up. And then the other thing she needs to also do is not just say phrases, you know, like, like.
Give me something practical.
Yeah, yeah. Say some strategy, some tactics, some data. You know?
I don't, I, yeah, I don't just want one Fort Worth or one Fort Worth. Like to me, that rings the same as y'all means all.
Yeah.
It's, we've, we've seen that, that, that y'all means all is a generally empty phrase.
Yeah.
Yeah, I 100% agree with you. Like, let's get something behind it. Um, and I, like, I want to see these candidates go at each other.
Yeah.
Like I, I really want to see the gloves come off and I hope that now that we're in the runoff, that that's what actually happens.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, well, let's go ahead and go into, I think we're going to go straight into our big story and we're going to spend a little time on it. Because Fernando Peralta, City Council runoff for District Nine. Um, we have him on today. He was great. Um, really awesome. Like, I loved his energy. I, I loved our questions and I just like how he, like what, there was a lot I learned. So really want to get that to you guys, but let's go ahead and talk about the, the big story. So the big story here today is all about where, um, people are struggling to find workers. Um, there's more job opportunity. People are not finding work and people are really like trying to hash that out. And this is not just a Fort Worth issue. This is a national issue. Um, as you know, a recent report from US labor market showed that only 266,000 jobs were created last month, while unemployment rate, rate still went up to 6.1%. Um, and so you're having like this weird dichotomy between like, why are, why is unemployment going up, jobs going down? While at the same time, people who are offering jobs can't find people to fill them. And then people are arguing about this like stimulus, uh, the $300. And so it's just, I, I, I think for us, it's just like, how do we walk through that as Fort Worthians is really important, especially because so much of our work is tourism, manufacturing, retail. Uh, so what is your take as you think about, uh, employees and employment and, and, and retail? What's your take?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we're in a weird place. Um, and really it's a reckoning. It's a reckoning that has been so long coming where we have stopped increasing, minimum wage and benefits to go alongside how the economy is growing and the cost of living has inflated. And the, the story specifically from the front page of the Sunday Star Telegram, talks about a Vietnamese restaurant that's located pretty close to a, uh, an Amazon fulfillment center. He pays $12 an hour, um, which is a, you know, a really fair wage in the restaurant industry. Versus Amazon starts you at $15. You get full benefits right from day one. Great benefits for your family, advancement opportunities. The, the opportunity to earn like certifications, whether that's like your truck driver's license, um, other types of higher education that they sponsor and pay for. Versus going and dealing with a bunch of Karens who are mad about something being wrong on their sandwich. And, and truly like, working in the service industry sucks. Like, I don't know if you've ever been in the, the service industry, but like working in a restaurant is, it, it's such hard work. And you're, you're never rewarded for it. And so like, I don't blame people for, after having a year to really evaluate what they want in their lives to be like, no, I'm not going to go back to getting yelled at and tipped terribly, even though I did a perfect job. Uh, or something wasn't my fault. Uh, like I don't, I don't blame people for not wanting to enter back into that for nothing. And so I, yeah, it, I, it's this really like interesting reckoning spot where I think businesses are starting to be able to say like, no, like you're a crappy customer. And like maybe empowering their employees and being like, if you had a bad experience, like don't come back. Like we don't want you here. And that's like the environment that's going to get people feeling comfortable to enter back into those jobs.
Yeah.
And so it, it's really just like, it's not related to getting an extra $300 a week in unemployment. Like that, it's, it's just such a caricature of people that people don't want to, to work.
Yeah. I also think you have the problem with, um, you know, of the 200 largest schools in the country, 60% of the kids are still not going back to school.
Yeah.
Full time. And when you look at these jobs, high school kids play a big part in these job spaces. And so it's really counterintuitive of like, their school's not allowing them to go to school. So now their parents, so not only do you lose the parent, because now the parent is stuck at home. But now if I can't go to school, why would I then think I can go to work? So you're really losing almost two people.
Yeah. And that, that was the depressing number out of the, the national jobs report is the, the percentage that went to women. And I mean, it was like nothing. And that's what we're seeing is that if kids can't go back to school because we haven't actually like totally fixed the, the pandemic yet. Um, so if kids can't go back to school, someone's got to watch them because you can't afford childcare, because how could you afford childcare in this country, um, for the average person? And so they've got to stay home. And so, yeah, we can't fill these jobs because of so many reasons, but that was a, a really depressing number that I saw come out of it was something like 80, 85% of the, the jobs for April went to men.
Yeah. I'm just like, what's crazy about it is like March job openings rose 34% compared with January 2020, where meanwhile, the number of job applications was down 13% in March from the pre-pandemic level. So it's, it's just kind of crazy how, um, this, there's this middle space and everyone's going to want to make it. The other one that I thought was crazy is, you know, in July of 1978, 71.8% of workers aged 16 to 19 participated in the labor force. In the 2010s, that number topped 45%.
Never, never topped 45%.
Never topped 45%. And the people who are still in dub, double digits of unemployment from the pandemic are 16 to 24 year olds. And so that, that also has to play kind of like this big gap, uh, and challenge. And, and I, but I also agree, like, you're right. Like jobs have to get better. You have to become more livable.
Yeah. Well, and even the other thing I didn't even mention about going to work at Amazon is like, you get paid time off right front, like you start accruing it right at the start. Like if we're comparing that with a, a service industry job where you don't have that time and so if you want to take time off, you have to hopefully be able to like reschedule shifts that you don't lose money or just take a, a pay cut for that week or for those two weeks. Um, I mean, that's just an entirely different, uh, aspect of like, we don't value, um, people in these jobs being able to take time off and rest or go travel and have experiences.
Yeah, this shows that like the Dallas Fed's most recent Texas Business Outlook survey found that 80, 80% of business owners cited a lot, a lack of applicants as their main impediment, impediment to filling jobs and 48% cited generous unemployment benefits. So yeah, I mean, I, I personally am in favor of this challenge over the challenge of like, there's a lot of people so that I can treat everyone like dirt because supply and demand. So like, this is on you. And I say this, like, I have friends who always complain like in the oil and gas industry here in Fort Worth. I can't find nobody work, wanting to work for our organization. I'm like, yeah, because no one wants to work for an oil and gas company. Like, like, I'm sorry, like, yeah, be a cool place, be relevant, like actually be somewhere where like people feel purposeful in their work. And like this is as, as much as this is a challenge, I do think we're also going through that, like, that cycle of like the middle ground of getting back to like normal. So like we're, we're, we're dealing with that, right? You see it in our flights being expensive. You're seeing in our like lack of supply with like lumber, steel and all this stuff. It's just like, everything is, everything is having like this regurgitation or like withdrawal kind of thing. And so we're feeling it, but hopefully rather than people seeing this, oh, this is because people are lazy. This is, you know, showing like, we need to really step up. What is going to be meaningful work for people?
Yeah. But I mean, from minute one that the jobs report was released, the, the spin immediately became, people are lazy and they're just going to collect their extra unemployment.
Yeah.
And so that's the, that's what sucks about it is that, uh, I don't know. I, I don't think that they make those claims in, in good faith. Um, I think they know they're just trying to advance a political agenda. Because if you have a conversation with somebody who doesn't have a job and hasn't had a job for a year, like there's a lot of depression and, uh, self-worth that has to be unwrapped out of that. Uh, and like I've, I've been in that place before and, yeah, to just be labeled as like somebody who's lazy and doesn't want to work, uh, is not how we get those people back into a healthy place.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a good time to go ahead and bring in our guests. Uh, so, um, I'm really excited for this. This was, um, an invite based off of a, a former, like one of our interviews we did with Tara Wilson out of District Four, who, uh, went against Carrie Moon and, and picked up a solid fight. But, um, she reached out and said, you gotta talk to Fernando Peralta, who is running for city council against District Nine. He is even in a bigger fight. Um, but not like a true fight because you know, it's not Carrie Moon they were trying to destroy. You know, this is also a new, this was Ann Zeta's district. So she, this is open and it's Elizabeth Beck and Fernando Peralta, two good people running for a seat. But he only got 12%, but Elizabeth Beck did not get the 50%.
Yeah. She was at like, what? 48 and a half, 49? Like she was only 70 votes or something away from hitting that 50% plus one. But Fernando is, I mean, best way to describe him is just as a, a public servant. Like he puts his heart into his community. Um, he, he's grew up around Fort Worth, but then has been back in the Fort Worth area since 2014. Uh, and he's the, has been the, the president of the Rosemont Neighborhood Association. Uh, he, he's part of the, uh, Texas National Guard. And he's worked with a lot of the people in office to try and make District Nine the best place possible for everyone to live. So we're really excited to have him on and, uh, here he is. Let's welcome him in for Fernando Peralta.
Yeah. So pretty much in 97, uh, we came to DFW, you know, my mom, uh, we're a super Catholic family. And so pretty much we're always here coming to Fort Worth. Uh, cause this is the only area where we had, you know, Spanish masks and stuff like that. And so, I mean, just the community, the Hispanic community in Fort Worth, uh, was my family. I mean, we got to, you know, we got to see my family during the summer because we go to Puerto Rico and Dominican Republic all the time, uh, in the summer. But when we were here in the States, it was just our Fort Worth Hispanic family. And that's how we grew and pretty much, you know, that's what led on to after I went to, to Catholic seminary in 2012 and I came back in 2014. I moved to Fort Worth and man, I'd started falling in love with, with Fort Worth even more already. Uh, but seeing it from a different lens, obviously I was in homelessness, uh, services back then, uh, and literally seeing Fort Worth at night, from that perspective. And just like literally from the perspective of, you know, under bridges, in the woods, uh, and abandoned bridges. Like, you know, that's, that's the perspective that I had in Fort Worth. And then just really the, the hard parts in Fort Worth, because whatever any of my like homeless clients, you know, when it dealt with like dealing with police or business owners. It, it was rough. It was rough. And so seeing Fort Worth in that lens kind of gave me that drive to like, you know what? I, well, I need to keep doing something, keep getting involved and doing it for those who need it the most in our city. And so went from there, you know, to a different couple of nonprofits. First we met this mission downtown, uh, and then just joined the Texas Army National Guard, where I'm still active with, uh, in 2018 and moved to Rosemont and just like even more fell in love with my neighborhood. But I, I knew that we needed something here, especially our Hispanic community on the South side. Uh, cause everybody always says, you know, oh, you know, Hispanics are on the North side. No, 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 no. Slow down. We're, we're here on the South side too.
We're everywhere.
Yeah. As you can see, we're here. Very good. So, uh, but that's, I mean, I, I just love, I love people. Uh, I love helping. I mean, I gotta, I mean, that's the way my mom taught me. You just, you just serve first and you keep going, do what you can. And that's, that's what I want to keep doing for my city. I want to keep serving. I want to keep loving on the city. I want to keep loving on the people that live in the city. And yeah, that's, that's my forward story.
Yeah.
Short and sweet.
Love it.
Yeah. And congratulations for, for making the runoff for District Nine, uh, coming from.
It's a big group.
Yeah. Coming from a crowded field. I feel like it was just, uh, who knows what's going to happen. Uh, so what, what does the next like few weeks look like for you headed towards the, the runoff election?
I mean, they look rough. I mean, literally, but it's, it's, you know what? I was, I was really surprised too, because when you looked at like even just like campaign finances, you know, I was the fourth one, uh, if you put in like, from the most or whatever, but, um, but you know, it's keeping it real. Uh, my thing is like, this is who I am. This is the work that I've done in our community. This is the work that I want to keep continuing doing in the community. And continuing to be my authentic self throughout this campaign is what I think got me to the runoff. And that's the same thing that I'm going to continue doing in this, uh, runoff. But obviously probably at 120% times two, divided by, but yeah, but just trying to, I'm literally because it was such a crowded field, um, it, it was hard to, to really get, you know, one's message out there.
Yeah.
Because there's so many different stories, so many different people. And now that it's just, uh, two of us, um, I think, you know, really amplifying my voice is going to reach a lot more people. I'm going to be doing a lot more in-person events. You know, obviously now that we're, you know, a lot more people are vaccinated and stuff like that. People feel more comfortable. Um, so I'm, I'm ready. I'm literally every day is something. Yeah. And that's why today I was like, it's Mother's Day, but my wife is a nurse, so she's working today.
I love, I love it.
You know, podcast works.
Definitely. Yeah. That first generation hustle right there. There you go. You know, we gotta get, make it happen. I get that. I get that. Um, so let me ask you, um, I mean, I got so many questions asking, I, we're about to be best friends after this. I just need to let you know. But so has any, uh, city council, uh, people who are running, um, endorsed you? Like, I feel like that would be a great strategy in a sense of, you know, in that short amount of time, how many of the others can you get to say, if you voted for me, go vote for Fernando?
So yeah, so I mean, they, I wanted to give, uh, each candidate that ran in the race, just, just some space.
Yeah.
Um, just cause I didn't want to be like, hey, you lost, now get behind me. I built really good, I mean, you know, I wanted to give space. But you know, I built, you know, I tell people I'm running this race. Um, but you know, we could still be friends and even somebody like Jared Sloan and I, it was really awesome because we built our friendship through this campaign. Him and I just like texting back and forth and be like, I see that you put your sign in front of mine. Even somebody like, so Jared and I, um, you know, Jared is behind me, uh, a hundred percent. Um, and he's, you know, he's going to come out and say that hopefully this week. And I spoke to Jordan Mims, um, and obviously he kind of like tossed it in the air. Um, and I, I love it. I mean, cause literally that night, uh, election, I went to go see him at his job just because I, I didn't really care too much about the results. The results were going to be the results. But I just wanted to make sure like, that we were good. Um, and so that's why I went to go see Jordan Mims that night at his job. I had a conversation with him. I was like, hey man, when, you know, whenever you want to continue this conversation, if you want to continue this conversation, I think a lot of stuff that you represented were incredible. They're awesome. They're authentic and we need that. Uh, the same thing that I told, uh, Jared Sloan. I mean, I think that's why he's back to me. So Brina and Taria even showed up at my election watch party and she was like, you know, Fernando, whatever, I'm behind you. And Ricardo Avitia, who's, you know, Ricardo and I have a really good relationship. I mean, one time he came to my house and we were just having a beer on his tailgate and talking about just our campaigns. Um, and so those are the kind of relationships that I built. Um, and those are kind of the, the candidates that have, um, backing me, but I'm going to let them do that at their own pace. But they know I'm here and open to conversation.
Yeah.
I think that's maybe like the, the fun and unique part of local politics is that, uh, like all of y'all are running because you're passionate about the city and you have ideas for your district and, uh, for whoever gets into that seat, like it's important to have the, those relationships with people who you know are passionate and will spend their time. Yeah. Backing you and trying to get things done in your district, which is ultimately the reason that you're doing this at all.
Yes, yes. I mean, it's, I mean, y'all, I mean, running a campaign is, it's rough. It's rough. But I mean, I think one of the biggest reasons also why I, I was able to get into the runoff is because of relationships that I've already built. And then many things that I've done in our district and throughout our city. Um, and that's why through this campaign, I want to continue building those relationships, especially with the other candidates, because I know how rough it is. I'm doing the same thing. So yeah, but for sure. I mean, if you put your name on the ballot.
Yeah.
I mean, you're, that's a sacrifice in itself.
Yeah. Um, well, I, I'm interested. Man, so I guess I'm interested to like, Yeah. Um, well, I'm interested, man. So I guess I'm interested to like, you know, I think about, so when I talk to people who voted for, and let me, let me make sure I'm correct. Did you get about 12% of the vote? 12%? Okay. Right. I think there's some symbolism into that in the sense of for every, every dollar a white person has, a black or brown family has 12 cents. And I think there's this, you know, this concept of, of hard work and oh, if you work hard, you can live the, a successful dream, but you don't wear, understand I have 12% of the connections, 12% of the money, 12%. And so, you know, the odds are against you. And I think, you know, the odds are tough. And I think when people say they vote for you, they, they felt that maybe Beck, who, you know, I know nothing of or, or, or where I'm not in your guys' district. You know, they, they mentioned how they felt like she ran for something earlier at the, for a house seat. And it just seems like she's trying to run for something where they voted for you because they felt like this is something that leans into your heart. And this specific position is something that you care about. Can you dive into, were you ever looking into politics? Or is this something like, what made you decide to run?
Yeah. I mean, the politics was definitely not, this is not something that when I was 12 years old, I was like, I want to be a politician. In the scope of my life, uh, but literally it's, it's, you know, when I do something, I'm, I'm, I'm passionate about it. And so that's, that's, I think that's what's led me to this point. The people around me see like how I just love on people. I'm willing to go 120%. I'm willing to be boots on ground. I'm willing to man, be out here during the summer, like just talking to neighbors and be like, hey, it's, you know, we need to do this and blah, 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 that. And so it's just like, when, when the election started coming up, you know, people started like mumbling stuff. And I've, and you know, one thing too, it's like, I surround myself with, with people that are always going to be real with me. And also I surround myself with people like my elected officials. I mean, you know, and, and Zeta and I had a good relationship and we still have a good friendship right now. You know, and she, she's one of the people that really encouraged me to run. Cause she said, Fernando, you, you've been doing an amazing job. Is this something that you would consider? I was like, running for office. I was like, I don't know. I don't know. But, um, but also too, people like state rep, uh, Ramon Romero, you know, and some of the board just sees like Sinto, Ashley, you know, and the others, it's like, you know, I tried to surround myself with people that are, that I think are doing, you know, hard work in our community. It might not be popular, but they're doing the work. They're being real about it. And so those are the same people that I turn to, um, when these mumbles and I start getting these calls and people like, Fernando, you should run for office. And I was like, well, first I need to ask permission from my wife. There's no way that I'm going to be running and even her, I mean, Maggie was like, babe, maybe this is something you should try. I'm not a what if kind of guy. You know, if I'm going to do something, I'm, I'm going to do it, do my best at it. If it doesn't work, okay, if it doesn't. But I think that's really what led to this point. I, I will go 120% at everything. I'm not a what if kind of guy. And then politics showed up. I, is politics ready for Fernando Peralta? I don't know, but we're about to see.
Yeah. And, um, yeah. Another question I guess I also have for you is, you know, one of the lowest turning out, uh, group of people is Latinos, you know, in Fort Worth. And when we look at ratio of population in the city and voter turnout. You know, you look at that in District Two, uh, where very few people voted, um, and a high Latino population. As a, um, you know, to me, it would seem that strong Latin politicians, if they could activate that group to actually show out, it will create a big difference. What is, what is your perspective there and what, what's the barrier? And what have you trying to do to, to get more Latinos, not just to vote for you, just to vote in general? And so, uh, what's that goal there?
Man, I'm going to be real with you right now. Uh, that's, that's one of the biggest, um, you know, obstacles that we have to, to overcome in our, I mean, just in our nation overall.
Yeah.
But also to keep it real, it's, it's, we have, since I started getting involved, especially here in Rosemont and making sure that the elected officials that represent our area know who, where Rosemont is, who we are. And you better know who Fernando Peralta is because I'm going to be calling you when, when something comes up and we need you to advocate. But it's, it's, we're so scattered, um, you know, and I think this is, this is something that goes beyond polit, I mean, beyond our Latinos. It's just in politics in general. A lot of people get into politics just for, for self-interest, you know, self-gain. And I'm not about that. I'm like, I'm, you know, hey, if you're, if you're willing to do the work, let's get to work. If you're not, just get out of the way, that kind of thing. And I think with our Latinos, um, that's why again, I go back to, to people who are elected already or have been elected, you know, you've got Carlos Flores, Sal Espino, Ramon Romero, Sinto. And I, these guys are guys that I have conversations with all the time. I'm like, what are we doing to engage our Hispanic community? Because even, even in the work that I've done here in the city, there's been, been, been plenty of times that people just, I go up there, I'm like, hey, this needs to happen for our community, or we need this and that, blah, blah, blah. And people are like, well, your, your community doesn't vote, you know, and they just kind of like throw that back in my face. And it's like, we don't sleep on that. All right. Because that's, I was like, I will work my butt off to make sure that happens. But two, if we trying to gather our elected officials, um, which that's something that we're doing, we're getting better at it. But we also needed to give our community some kind of, not hope, because I don't, I don't believe in hope, but just like somebody that they can really rally behind. Who's actually been doing the work. And I think that right now we have an incredible opportunity in Fort Worth. With so many candidates that ran and now in the mayor's race, um, that we have a Latino candidate here in District Nine. District Nine has been a Latino opportunity district since the seventies.
Yeah.
That's over 40 years. And we've had Latino candidates run here before. But when have we had a Latino candidate like me who's been doing the work for several years already? Um, and I'm willing to talk to anybody. I'm not, I have no time for this partisan noise. That's one of the biggest things that I'm so excited running is because, you know, being military, um, you know, just to get permission to run. I have to, you know, talk to JAG and all this and all that. And, you know, to stay nonpartisan, I'm like, that's fine with me. Because that helps me focus on the issues that are affecting our communities and not just our Latino community, but all our communities, because we're all suffering right now. But when it comes to our Latino community, I think we are getting better at it in Fort Worth. But I have no problem, you know, being Puerto Rican, you know, we just say how it is. And I'm just, hey, with it or you're not.
We can't help, yeah, we can't help it. I get that. So, um, uh, I mean, Jimmy, sorry for, I mean, I guess this now goes to, we were talking about, um, we were talking about Doyle Heine, Heinz from, we watched the panel, uh, and I think about representation. And there was a point in y'all's panel where Doyle, uh, the, uh, one of the candidates, uh, kind of stopped at the very end and kind of pointed at you and the other two minority candidates. And, you know, as a white man kind of said, like, I believe in these guys and like what these guys stand. And, and for me, I was like, super like not trying to cry or anything, because I just thought it was beautiful. That something like, you know, like that, talk to me about, um, I guess that representation piece. And you know, how important that is, uh, for your community and for Fort Worth. You know, especially in, at that time. And I think that's, that was a moment, I think. And, and I don't think people really talk about the importance of representation enough in, in city council and government.
Yeah. I mean, one, one thing real quick, after that forum, I remember talking to Mr. Doyle after, and he's like, so Fernando, I'm just trying to keep it 100. And I was like, all right, Mr. Mike, all right. I think every race should have a Doyle final.
Absolutely.
But literally, I mean, representation, we, we gotta be real in Fort Worth. I mean, you, we talk about the population of our Hispanic community in Fort Worth. We, we should have had representation a long time ago. Here in District Nine, we should have had representation a long time ago. And you know, one of the biggest things that, that really gets me kind of frustrated, uh, running, uh, this campaign is sometimes people are like, they're saying, oh Fernando, you're being too Hispanic or Fernando, you're not being Hispanic enough. And it's like, it's like you, you have to walk this fine line. I'm running because all our communities need a voice. But yes, I am Latino. This is, it's on my face. I mean, people talk about diversity and then are running against candidates who are from, you know, communities, communities of color, like hello, like yesterday I was at, uh, the Chorizo Menudo breakfast.
Yep.
On the North Side. And I said, I said, you know, that we talk about diversity and I just, do I look like diversity? I mean, let's be real about it. There's, it's crazy because people will talk about diversity and representation and then work against it. And it's like, let's be real in Fort Worth, if we do have representation, because one thing, when I talk about diversity, I'm not just talking about racial diversity. And I'm talking about generational diversity and also cultural diversity. I mean, we are Fort Worth, the, the average age is like 34, 35. We have a young population here in Fort Worth, a diverse population. But our city government doesn't need to look anything close to that.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, come on, let's, let's be real about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. One thing that, I mean, we've been talking about over the last six months. And, uh, I mean, I feel like you mentioned that the Hispanic community like needs something or someone to get behind. And Hempil No Se Vende was, felt like something that the community was able to get behind and then actually be heard. Can you talk about what it was like to, to see that in your community and actually see a response from local government to, to listen to the community that was speaking up and saying like, this is not what we want here?
Yeah. I mean, that was, I was all over, um, what's going on Hempil One, because you know, being the president of Las Amenas Rosemont, I was on the board for the Hempil Quarter Task Force. I'm still on the board for the Hempil Quarter Task Force, which is the group that's doing, uh, the rezoning. But when Hempil No Se Vende kind of formed, um, I was caught in kind of like a really awkward position. Because, you know, I'm on this task force and they've been doing the work, obviously for 20 years. And I, I just got on there and I was, I think a little bit, almost a year on the board. And obviously, you know, here in Rosemont, one of our biggest things is bringing information to our community, English and Spanish. And we've gave information to the, to our neighbors here in Rosemont. Um, I don't know about the other neighbor association along Hempil. So when this happened, I was like, I'm on the task force. I do believe that we do need to bring funding into Hempil. Because if our, if Hempil stays stagnant, that's unhealthy for the businesses and then the neighborhoods off of it. Hempil No Se Vende represents our Hispanic community standing up. I was like, and I remember being here in my living room with my wife and one of my friends. And I was like, what do I do? I have to do something. And that's when I asked, uh, for there to be a pause, uh, in this whole process. I posted this long thing on, on Facebook. But Hempil No Se Vende, um, is it, it was creating awareness. Um, and this is what we needed. I mean, being the youngest, you know, neighborhood president in Fort Worth, like we got, we got a lot of stuff done. But there's still whole much more hap, that needs to happen with our Hispanic community on the South Side. And it's hard to do that. And so that's why when Hempil No Se Vende, Ricardo Avitia, uh, who's part of that group, uh, put that together. Like I was trying to help be that bridge between both groups. Because when we talk about stuff that affects our communities, uh, we need to have both sides represented. But sometimes in Fort Worth, it's really hard to have both sides at the same table. And so that's what I was trying to do. And I remember even the night before my son was born, uh, on December 9th, I was on a call, on a Zoom call with, uh, with United Fort Worth, um, and Hempil No Se Vende. And literally I was like, hey guys, I was like, if you're coming, if we're, the zoning commission meeting was going to happen on the night. And I said, hey, this is going to happen. We can't just go in there yelling and screaming. There has to be clear plans on what you want to see.
Yeah.
What we want to do for our community. Um, and so that's, you know, just help giving my perspective for being on the Hempil Quarter Task Force. But also believing that we need to pause if my, if our Hispanic community is speaking up, I was like, we need to slow this down. And that's why, that's why I think I learned I built a, I think a great friendship. And we're still, because we respect each other a lot, uh, because it takes a lot of hard work. I mean, it takes time and it takes a lot of hard work.
Yeah.
One thing you said that I just had a random thought about, uh, is just getting information to your neighborhood in both English and Spanish. And there's a Star Telegram article this week about how, um, people submitting their vaccine appointment registrations in Spanish are receiving their information calls in English. And that just feels very like representative of maybe Fort, where Fort Worth has been in the past, like couple of decades. And it's like, how do we move forward in better incorporating and catering to the, the massive minority population that we have here? And making them actually feel heard on a city council and mayoral level?
Yeah. I mean, literally every single meeting that I go to with the city, that it's a public meeting, the two first questions that I always ask is, is there going to be a translator at this meeting next time? And is this demonstration in Spanish? This should be basic.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, I remember when, even on city council, when somebody called in, in Spanish and there wasn't a translator available and they just hung up and kept moving on like that. Like this is, this is ridiculous. Like, and that's why we've been pushing as a neighbor association that you don't come into Rosemont without somebody who speaks Spanish or the material being in Spanish. And that's why too, I partnered up with, uh, Roxanne Martinez, who's running for a school board, um, to work in Rosemont on, over there on the West Side and then on the North Side to get people registered for the vaccine while I'm running this campaign. Because there's so many people in our Hispanic community that want to get vaccinated, that want information, uh, but can't get that information. It's not easily accessible. And it's like, and we're filling out these forms, we're putting them in Spanish, but it's like, hello, like they are getting calls in English and that's the frustrating part. And so that's why I, me and others in the community like Roxanne, just decided, you know what? We're, we're going to get this. We took it to, uh, the county commissioner and just said, we need vaccines in this area. And we're trying to get vaccines in the North Side and the South Side, putting it within our community. So our community knows there's people that look like us there. And people feel comfortable because even when we were doing that here at Rosemont Elementary, having the drive-through for people to sign up, people were like, oh, you know, I thought this was where we would get our vaccine. I was like, not yet, but tell everybody about it. Get you registered and then we'll let you know and we'll be right back here. And so that's, I mean, there's so many, it's, it's crazy because even in Rosemont, we, we're one of the, the most disenfranchised neighborhoods on the South Side.
Yeah.
And it's because our Hispanic community, we don't mess with them, they won't mess with us, you know? And it's like that, like that disconnect. But again, so many years that we've gone without any kind of funding, um, any kind of like care for our neighborhood. And it's because people, if they go to the city, um, and they try to do anything, even just to get like permits to do stuff.
Yeah.
It's a hassle. Like what are we, creating a city that is more customer service focused is what we need. We need to bring, there is so much paper. We have so much technology that we can, like, we need to just upgrade our city and make it more user friendly for everybody. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's like, okay, this makes sense. But the people that we have representing us, like this is why representation matters. We live this every day. I mean, I, I face racism every single day. All right. And there's people like telling me, don't speak Mexican. I was like, I don't speak Mexican. I speak Spanish. All right. So you, you, you should educate yourself before you come at me like that. So it's, we, this is the kind of stuff, and this happens within our city. And I'm not saying like our city is evil or nothing like that, but when we have representation of our communities that needed the most at that level, then hey, we can firsthand experience tell you that the way you're doing this is not inclusive.
What, um, what, so at that luncheon that you went to, um, in the morning, I know other candidates were there. What is your take on the mayoral race, which is, is much closer than your race, right? It's much closer. Um, but what is your take on as you see, um, you know, potentially the first black, uh, Fort Worth mayor, woman mayor? And then the first millennial mayor, um, neither are Latino, but what do you see when you, when you look at the candidates? And like, what is your take as you prepare to, to the ballot box, um, in June?
I mean, that, the biggest thing for me is, you know, one of the things that I, that, that run for city council, I'm not just trying to run for the Latino community. I'm trying to run for all our communities in District Nine, uh, because we have Oak, Chris, Berkeley, Paramount, Ryan Place, Worth Heights. I mean, all these, all these different neighborhoods that creates such a diversity. Because even, I mean, again, it's, that's what we need in, in a mayoral candidate. I've spoken to both of them. Um, I think they're both incredible women. Um, they each bring their thing.
Yep.
But it like, again, I, I just want to like really emphasize, cause this is one of the biggest things I keep hearing that, oh, he's just going to represent the Latino community.
That's true.
It's like, no, you know, I'm here to represent everybody. I, I, yes, I can speak Spanish. So yes, I can speak to, to the Latino community. Whoa. But it's like, we have, we have to be able to speak to everybody. Um, and, and if I list like from West Seven to Linwood, to, to Riverside, to all these neighborhoods, again, it's like, come on, we need a mayoral candidate that can speak to everybody. Um, and in the ballot box, that's what I'm looking for. After speaking with them, um, you know, they, again, they're, they're both incredible. They both bring different, uh, stuff to, to that seat. But if we, as a city, um, if we want to step up as a city, first of all, we need to get out and vote.
Yeah.
Um, and vote for the candidate that, because we all bring something to the table.
Yep.
Um, and so that's what we need to be bringing to the ballot box is who we want to see as mayor that we think will step it up for our entire city. Uh, not just a certain party or a certain group, uh, because that's, we don't need that at, in the mayor's seat and we don't need that in city council.
Yeah, I appreciate that context. You know, I think it's so easy for us to get down our, our identity rabbit hole on things like this and, and, and talk about those things. And so I think it's good for, uh, our listeners and just also to see that just because we're black, brown, doesn't mean that's all that we represent and we can represent, uh, you as well. I guess my last, um, question, uh, you mentioned your work in the, uh, homeless community here in Fort Worth. Um, that's, that's another huge piece here in Fort Worth. Uh, we're, we're east side people right off of East Lancaster. So, you know, we're, we're, we see, you know, the challenges and struggles. And so what is your, what is your ideas to, to like you say, support all people, including, um, are people who have it the hardest right now?
Yeah. I mean, that's, this is like, goes back again, that we need to be able to elect candidates who have actually been doing the work uh, in our city and with, within our communities. And when it comes to our homeless community, I will go toe to toe with anybody. Um, because I was there in the trenches, um, speaking to them. People treat our, our homeless population as an invisible population. Um, I mean, even, so I have a, a German shepherd, uh, that she was my first dog that actually got from one of my homeless clients because she didn't want to let her dog go. But she couldn't get into housing without her dog. Um, and when we talk about like, people are like, oh, well, why didn't she just give up the dog? She, you know, it's housing. But that's the only thing she had. When I walked into people's camps, you know, I was walking in somebody's home. All right. I asked permission to walk into their home. Um, and just because the way people live on the street isn't, is so different from the way we live, that doesn't mean you have to treat them some kind of way. Uh, uh, that's why, I mean, and I still, that, that German shepherd Bella is still with me, like, you know, all these years later and she's like, she's my first baby. Um, and she was given to me from one of my homeless clients that we were able to get housed because she trusted me, that trust. So the city really needs to also start, you know, treating our, our, I mean, our homeless population as part of our city. Sometimes we just brush them off. And sometimes even when some elected officials come down to Lancaster, code compliance comes out and clears down Lancaster to make it seem like if there's not an issue, but when there is, we need to have housing first, um, across our city with affordable housing and then wraparound services, because you can't expect people to get out of homelessness, uh, without housing first and then bringing those wraparound services. So, yeah, that's that.
Well, I appreciate it. Uh, we appreciate you ju- jumping on the pod on Mother's Day. Uh, and so thank your wife as well. And, uh, do you have any last kind of comments or things you would like to share?
Yeah. I mean, I just, I want to keep re- emphasizing to people that, you know, this, this election, the biggest elections we can have in our city, this is not only going to determine the next two years, but it's going to be in the next ten years and in the ten years after that. Like we seriously have to get out and vote.
Yeah.
Uh, vote for the candidates that you think are in this for the right reasons. Uh, and, and bring in neighbors, bring your, bring your, bring your, everybody because your, your vote really does matter. Uh, and if you, I mean, if you ask me for district nine, if we're talking about representation, who's done the work? Then, you know, your vote is for Fernando Peralta. I just throw that in there. So I seriously appreciate you guys for inviting me.
Yeah. Thanks so much for your time. And, um, I mean, we're looking forward to the, the next few weeks and seeing how things shake out and, uh, either way, I'm sure that you're looking forward to some rest on come June sixth and seventh. Um, and getting to really being back at, at work in your community. So we're, uh, we're rooting for you and we're excited for, to see how the next few weeks come out.
Seriously. Yeah. Thank you guys so much.
Well, that was Fernando Peralta.
Yeah, I hadn't, uh, I hadn't really plugged into District Nine at all. And so that was the, the first time I've really heard him speak and, uh, yeah, I mean, I'm excited to, I've, I feel like the, the knock, like you mentioned against Elizabeth Beck has been that, like you're just trying to run for something, like we've seen you all over the place. Um, but you are also much more experienced in politics than anybody that you're running against. And so
Yep.
even with how the initial election shook out, um, he's up against a pretty big battle, but I wouldn't say that it's a battle that he couldn't win, um, especially if he can start to mobilize the
Yep.
Hispanic community over in Rosemont.
Yeah. The, the tough thing, the tough thing, I mean, when you look at the district, right? He's, he supports the, the, the difficult, the, the, you know, what he says is the part that's exited from everyone else, right? His community does their thing and the rest of the community do their thing. You mentioned those places, Mistletoe Heights, Berkeley's place, you know, West Magnolia. I, I, I am one feeling a little bit more regrettable that I didn't spend more, we didn't spend more time not focusing. What can you do for privileged white people? Not just Latinos.
Yeah.
I feel bad that we didn't spend more time doing that.
Yeah. I think that, uh, I mean, District Nine is a weird place in that 10 years ago, the dynamic of it was just so radically different than what it is now. And the growth in Fort Worth doesn't know that. Like they don't know that pre 2010, if you told somebody you were going to hang out on West Magnolia, you'd get like a, a weird look. It's like, why, why would you do that?
Yeah.
Um, and we're not far removed from that. But like he said, it's been a large Latino community since the seventies.
Yep.
But they've never been represented in office. Um, and I don't, I wonder even how redistricting could shake out with, uh, potentially hemp hill. I like, I could see a future in which hemp hill was used as a divider and then linked, um, Rosemont into a district with historic South Side, um, depending on how the council shakes out and how they best think it would fit their, uh, advantages, because if we're not going to have an independent redistricting committee, that's how it's going to work. Um, so it really is a challenge of like, we want representation in the communities. And the answer shouldn't, to that shouldn't be redistricting, but I don't know, how can we leverage redistricting as a, as a tool for that? Um, if as it looks like in this election, we're not going to come out with a more diverse city council than we had before.
Yep.
I don't know what the, the right answer is.
Yeah, it's a hard thing.
But we've got to give a seat at the table to people to where in a nine vote city council, instead of having one to two representatives for these minority communities or, or three with Carlos Flores. Um, you've got a pretty even breakdown of, especially when we moved to eleven.
That's why Jared would be so huge if Jared pulls it off.
Yeah, that would be, I think that would be a massive win and really a, an indication of maybe some tide starting to change where a, a black man could walk into a city council race against an incumbent upper middle class white guy and take him down.
Yeah.
Like that, I mean, that's huge if, if he can pull that off. Um, and so I don't, I don't know. I feel like that's the, the conversation of, yeah, we do need policies in place that allow for better wealth building opportunities for black and brown people. And that has to start with them having a, a seat at the table.
Yep.
To actually have their voice heard, which is something that Fernando talked about a lot, like these people aren't going to get out and vote if they don't see the purpose of it. They need something to rally behind or someone to rally behind and to actually see that the government works for them.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, let's, uh, let's go ahead and dive into our, uh, wins and losses, uh, and, uh, close out the episode.
Yeah. Uh, I'll start with my loss. Um, the, uh, Fort Worth Magazine this week had an, an outgoing conversation with Mayor Price and, uh, I don't know, I, I've generally had a, an indifferent to positive, um, impression of Mayor Price and her time in office. And obviously Fort Worth has grown a ton and a lot of that has happened um, because of her stewardship. And so that's not lost on me. Um, but just reading through the, the manuscript and the interview, I was just like, man, like you're missing the, you're missing the point on so much of this. Um, and one, I, I just really hate that, uh, a lot of the news publications, and I, I don't think this is consciously, are giving both Price and Mattie Parker a consistent platform to say, we think Deborah Peoples is too political for this office. That's to- one, that's total BS because I, she's not on, she's not on Fox News.
Yeah.
Like serving as a, a mouthpiece for a lot of misinformation. Like that's not what Deborah's doing. That's what Mayor Price is doing. How come she can do that and not be called partisan? Like, we know the answer to it.
Yeah.
Um, but you're not allowed to say that in Fort Worth, or else you get labeled as being too political.
Yeah.
Um, and so that was, the interview starts with that and it's like the 10th time I've seen it this week and it just kind of put me over the edge. Um, but I mean, the, her answers to, to public transit, to race relations, to, to education, it, it all just felt like it was really missing the boat and really frustrated me. And I was just like, man, like we're at the end of this 10 years that we're acting like we're celebrating and it just seems like we we're so off course and I, I don't see a push to set us back into the right focus on a lot of these things.
And you're saying this from the worry of Deborah winning?
Of
Like you think it, it's made enough damage where you're like, you're just making it hard to see a path where Peoples win?
I mean, that not, I'm not necessarily saying that from this article, although I do like, just based on how the numbers shook out, like I do see that, but just the way that the things that we are focused on in education are like talking about third grade reading levels and like getting people to a third grade reading level. And it doesn't talk about how funding is tied to property taxes and how all the rich people just go put their, their kids in public school or in private school or homeschool them. It's like just this constant throwing darts at solutions without actually addressing the root cause. And ultimately that's just a waste of time, a waste of money. And it just keeps spinning this cycle that we're in of lagging behind. So like Fort Worth lagging at a third grade reading level isn't going to get better by anything that she outlines. It's going to get better by putting funding and passionate people with influence and ca- that can actually make like funding decisions in position to help these kids.
Yeah.
And to get them on track. Um, same, same thing with Panther, the way she talks about Panther Island, just all of it felt very, uh, none of it felt like it was focused on root causes. And if we're not focused on the root cause of our issues, then we're going to get nowhere.
Yep.
And so it just made, it, it, it made me a little bit frustrated.
Yeah, yeah.
If you can tell.
Yeah. I mean, um, my, my loss is, um, my loss is actually, it's, 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 it's overall win. I don't want to be too grumpy gills, but Texas gained software tech jobs over Austin. Dallas, Fort Worth as a hub. So I know there was a lot of bragging. I know, um, over in the Dallas world, there was an entrepreneurial kind of day. And, uh, I think, uh, Trey Boils, uh, kind of represents over there, which is really involved in the education, I mean, the entrepreneurship space over there. Kind of talked about how Dallas leads, um, in software growth and entrepreneurship growth. But I just think it's a loss because it's, it, this is why Cameron Cushman and Sparkyard's data is so important is because yes, software jobs might have grown. One, we're a bigger city than Austin by a lot. But then two, uh, like as a metro.
Yeah.
And two, um, what it, you know, why, what it doesn't show is like where they're working at. And that's what I would love to see from that data is because like, just because innovative people go work at Frito Lay or Toyota or, you know?
Yeah.
The big core, because they'll get a cush job and they'll be able to, you know, a, a, an offer that can't say no is like, that's, it's, it's more of a loss because what we need to be more like, we shouldn't be tracking ourselves like, we should accept that we're not more entrepreneurial rather than try, like, we try to act like we are and like, we're using this token, oh, look at all these software jobs that we're getting. When really it just means like every company is trying to get a software engineer these days. And so it's just not, it's not showing that we're more innovative. And Cameron's research shows like Dallas, Fort Worth lacks way behind in investing in startups and innovative ideas compared to Austin.
Yeah.
And I just wish like all this hype around like, oh, we're getting more software engineers than Austin is like, yeah, because we're taking a lot of talent and putting them in cubicles and giving them deals that they can't say no to.
Yeah.
So unless of supporting those same exact people to start companies, we're instead, you know, you know, paying them in floor nine of the AT&T building. So that was my loss, um, there, um, just on how we're trying to, um, act tough on innovation.
Yeah, that's totally fair. Um, my win, the, uh, the Cal Town Marathon happened
Yeah.
this weekend. And I, I think that, uh, it was just maybe one of those little signs that, um, we're getting back on the right track. And obviously like the, the CDC has said that, that like, if you're vaccinated, you no longer need to, to wear a, a mask outdoors in, in small gatherings. And it's, it was, I don't know, I'm not a, I ran a half marathon once. I will never do it again. Um, but it was just one of those things where, uh, it just felt really encouraging to, to see something like that able to, to come back and, and get going again. So I, uh, I was really encouraged by that.
Yeah. I mean, that kind of goes, um, kind of to, to my win as well is the large crowd at the Ranger game yet to cause a COVID-19 spike. I mean, I mean, I think that's, 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 that's awesome for the economy growing. You're seeing, we, you know, we're talking about jobs and all that as well. So, um, I thought that was promising. I think it's interesting because we're 21% vaccinated here in Tarrant County, um, which is low.
But who is going to be able to afford to go to Rangers opening day?
Yeah.
Probably people that are in areas that are at higher vaccination levels.
Yeah, yeah.
So I agree with you that it is really encouraging and especially encouraging to see that a crowd like that of probably a crowd like that of probably mostly vaccinated people, um, could come together and not see really, there's only been like a little bump over the last week. Um, but it's nothing, it's not putting up any red flags for anyone. So I, I agree that that's definitely a win.
Yeah. And, and, and so that's, yeah, I thought that was great as I'm excited to get out to events and, and, and things like that. Um, so it seems like everyone else is doing pretty well as well in the sense of how busy everything is. And all my friends at bars and restaurants are, are, are feeling that comeback. I don't know if you've seen anything or heard anything like that, but it, it, it's, it seems like people are coming back.
Yeah, I definitely agree. It, uh, we're on South Main last night and parking took a while.
Oh, yeah.
And it's like, yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Where'd you go?
Uh, we went to Black Cat and then we, uh, ended up at Nickel City.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Everyone raves about Nickel City.
It was great. I really loved it.
I still haven't done it yet.
Yeah, it's, uh, definitely worth going to.
Yeah, I did a Tarantulas the other day and the same thing. I was like, all this traffic and I was like, uh-oh, like this is, this is like giving me some deep element anxiety over here. I feel like I'm, like we're already there. And so, but we went to Tarantula and that was super cool.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah. One drink. I was like, holy smokes, I'm getting old. You know, I can't, I can't handle one of these. Um, but no, thank you everyone for, uh, checking out the eight one seven podcasts. Uh, Fernando's conversation was cool. Um, really opened up some, I think it's like, things were, for, for me, I, I feel like that was a kind of great interview just to connect that someone with so much energy and, uh, and, and relatability to myself, you know? So I just thought he was super cool.
Yeah. Thanks for listening. And, uh, we've got a bonus pod coming this week. We got to sit down and talk with Chris Cobbler of the Fort Worth Report. Um, so that'll be coming out, I believe on Thursday. Uh, and then next week, another exciting interview, talking to Dr. Emily Ferris, who is a professor of political science at, uh, TCU and getting to talk with her about the, uh, May 1st election and what the runoff should look like. So a lot that we're, we're really excited about coming up.
Yeah, there's, those are going to be, see some sweet interviews. And, uh, you also have, um, I believe May 12th, the Chamber of Commerce doing their debate, uh, with, or panel forum, um, with Deborah and Matty. And then May 18th, KERA with the partnership with Fort Worth Report is doing, um, I guess more of a legit debate maybe. So, um, check those two out as you get ready to vote.
Yeah, it's time to throw down. Uh, thanks for listening and we'll, uh,
Yeah, yeah.